Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. We have a full house here today and a lot of visual tactile aids for our report on the reading program. So the first, after the pledge, we have approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the April 10th minutes.
Second.
No, I need a motion. A motion by Ilda, seconded by Jaime. Any additions, changes, edits?
Just a question. Jaime wasn't here. Can you second the motion anyway?
Can he make the motion to approve?
When was I not here?
On April 10th.
The minutes are approving right now.
Yeah.
Entertained or no?
That's the one you missed.
I know, I know you can't.
I wasn't able to.
No, I know you can't.
I cannot second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Seconded by Murphy. Good catch. All those, hearing no further discussion. I mean, I know there are a couple typos in here, but they're nothing important.
That's what Mary picks up on.
There's nothing huge. It's like school spelled wrong. At any rate, all those in favor of the minutes for April 10th? Any opposed? Abstentions?
Yes.
One abstention from Jaime. How about a motion for the Board of Education meeting minutes on April 25th?
I can second this one.
Okay.
We're here for that one.
Any additions, corrections, changes? Hearing none. All those in favor of the April 25th Board of Education Special Meeting Workshop Minutes? Opposed? Abstentions? Two abstent-- three abstention-- no. You voted in support?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So all were yeses except for two abstentions from Mike and Mark. So we have public comment. Is there anybody who has signed up under public comment? Excuse me. Okay. Since there's no public comment, we would move to reports. This is not a special meeting, so we can change items in order on the agenda. There's been a suggestion made since we have a large group of folks here, some of whom are here to present the American Reading Company report. Would you all entertain the option of moving that up on the agenda?
Make the motion we move.
Mike made the motion to move up the discussion items to before the reports. Seconded by Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. So you won't have to wait while we wade through everything else. So I'll have you introduce the reports.
Sure.
Good evening, members of the board, and good evening to members of the community. It gives me great pleasure to have an outstanding group of Wyndham Public School teachers who are here tonight to talk about an amazing program that we have in our school, the American Reading Company. Before we start, I'm going to have each one of the teachers that are here tonight introduce themselves, let you know what school they're coming from, and what grade do they teach.
Kurt Hayes from Wyndham Center School, 3rd grade.
Good evening. I'm Kim Lewis. I'm from the Charles Barrows Stem Academy, and I teach 2nd grade.
Hello, I'm Sherry Geitner, and I teach at Barrows Kindergarten.
Hi, I'm Amy Fen Smith. I'm the dual-language specialist. I work in the pre-K North Wyndham Wyndham Center Sweeney, Natchog, and the middle school.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Vera. I teach at Sweeney, 2nd grade dual-language.
I'm Sarah Rodriguez, 2nd grade Compañeros, Spanish component at North Wyndham.
Hi, everyone. I'm Michelle Dupuy. I'm a literacy coach at Natchog School, which is a K-5 elementary school.
Suzanne Slater, Natchog Kindergarten.
Jessica Sewell for North Wyndham, 1st grade.
And we do have Mrs. Liz Boncarnier with us, the principal of North Wyndham. Liz, and Liz also will be presenting here with us today. So we wanted to bring you some information about this wonderful program that we have here in our school district called the American Reading Company. That's the name of the program. Our district is very unique, and by the way, Dr. Yonberg also would be presenting. Tracy, raise your hand. Okay?
I have the presentation in front of them in the folder.
Our district is very unique, and when it comes to reading, it becomes even more, more unique. With the highest percentage of second language learners in the state of Connecticut, 27%, and with a high percent of Latino students, 74%, even though students may exit it from the ELL, meaning from the second language TESOL component, they still need support in learning English because learning the academic language takes more than three years. I am a second language learner, and I'm still a second language learner, even though I have a doctorate. So it's very important for us to understand the kind of program that our kids need to be successful. So now we know better. Now that we know what it takes to have good reading instruction. And the teachers will talk about that. I'm pretty sure you want to hear from them, not from me. We know that we had to make a shift in the type of program we provide our students. And definitely because we're a district that is committed to equity, we needed to have a program that really provide that kind of service to our kids. So a couple objectives for today. We want to outline the features of the American Reading Company to show you why this is different than any traditional basal reader. It's not a traditional basal reader. We want to compare American Reading Company with Journeys, the program that we had before. And by the way, that will not be supported anymore by the company itself. And I want you to hear from the teachers that are using the program. So these are the three objectives for today. Why ARC? I'm going to start this very quickly with ARC. You will hear from Dr. Yonberg and from the teachers that ARC is the only program, ELA program, in the country to earn a green rating from Ed Reports. And they will talk about what is Ed's report in a second. But it's the only program in the country that gets a green rating from Ed Reports. ARC focuses on access and equity for all students. All students, especially students that are ELL students. It's a very inclusive program. It's a student-centered program. And when students are learning, teachers are also learning. ARC focuses in creating a literacy transformation in the entire school and the entire school district. Resources are available in English and Spanish, talking about equity. Very important. Resources are supported by customized PD, professional development, embedded professional development, and quality materials also. ARC strengthens the capacity of the entire district, not only the school, to be a culture of literacy, and I believe in that. And it turns balanced literacy into transformational literacy, transformative literacy. What does that mean? You will see by the pictures that we want to show you tonight that in the classroom that we are using ARC right now, K through 2, and North Wyndham in the Compañeros program. When you walk into a classroom and kids are using ARC, you can see the love for reading. You can see how kids want to read. You can see how kids are motivated to read. So it transforms the balance literacy in what we call a transformative literacy culture in the school. And again, I do believe that it's student-centered, and you guys can say that, disagree or not. But I do believe that ARC is a student-centered program that develops that cultural literacy. I was not here a year ago about ARC. It took me some time to grow. But now I have grown to see the benefits of the program, and I'm committed. And I know that the more we use ARC, we will see the benefit for our students in the years to come. But you don't need to hear it from me. You're going to hear it from the teacher that are using ARC. Tracy, Dr. Yonberg, you want to come?
Actually, I think you have one more slide, and then--
I have one more slide? I thought I did two. Well, I think the teachers can handle that. What does ARC provide? I'm pretty sure you guys want to talk about that, right? So I can leave the slide for them, and they can talk about that. So why you don't go to your slide? Jaime's up next.
Hi. I've been nominated as the historian as, I think, the most veteran teacher-- maybe not. 1998. Oh, Michelle's beat me. We're going to start by telling you where we were before ARC. As of last year, our-- I'm going to put this down. Our kindergarten through 3rd grade, we're using a series called Imagine It. Imagine It stopped being produced by the publisher, and so we were no longer able to continue teaching with Imagine It. Our grades 4 and 5 were and still are using Journeys, which is another program from another publisher. We weren't getting the results on the test scores that we wanted to see. And so since we had been using basals, we wanted, the teachers wanted to try something different. I think that improving our reading proficiency has always been a goal as long as I've been here in Wyndham, and it continues to be our focus of our district. Another key factor in choosing ARC is we have three really different programs, well, two different programs. In Wyndham, we have our unilingual classes. Those are classes where students are learning in English. We have our dual-language classes in Compañeros and our one-way dual, Dos Ríos. So to find a program that meets the needs of all those separate programs in Wyndham was our challenge. We actually started using ARC last school year just in Compañeros because we didn't have enough resources to teach effectively in Spanish. And so ARC first caught our attention because of the authentic Spanish text it offered, because of the quality of the literature in both English and Spanish, and because it's unique in that it teaches Spanish the way Spanish is supposed to be taught, which is slightly different from the way we teach English. We also were able to use ARC for our summer school classes, and we had great results. Students were more engaged in summer school. All right. So as teachers, we always look at data. So we have a little data for you here. As we said, in North Wyndham School, we used ARC in Compañeros last year. So this is our 2nd year in Compañeros. You can see an improvement already. This year, last year, 90 students at North Wyndham School qualified for summer school. This year, we are down to 59. So there's already an improvement in literacy. The highest percentage of K through 3 students that are reaching benchmark on the DIBELS test in reading as well. And as you can see, so Compañeros had ARC last year, and the students in Grade 3 Compañeros reached 29% proficiency, which is the highest rating they've had in the past four years, and 45% proficiency for Grade 4, which is the highest rate in four years. So we're already starting to see in Compañeros from using it last year that it's helping our literacy scores. These are just some more information about our DIBELS score. So this is from our 1st year this year using ARC, everyone at North Wyndham School. You could see that kindergarten, the proficiency is up 29%. So 29% more of our kindergarten students are where they're supposed to be for the end of kindergarten. Up 23% in 1st grade, and then 10% in 2nd and 3rd grade. It's great to see those higher numbers in the lower grades because as we keep going with ARC, we'll build that strong foundation that'll keep those numbers moving up in the years to come. Okay, the next 3 slides are mine, and they're just slides with really neat graphics to show you what the average classroom in Wyndham looks like and how that classroom compares to classrooms across the state of Connecticut. First slide talks about the number of students we have who are of Latino and Hispanic descent. So the blue figures in that infographic are showing you that in an average K to 3 classroom, we have approximately 70% of those students of Latino and Hispanic descent versus what the state of Connecticut has at about 30%. That's a significant difference, so it has an impact on what we need for instructional materials and what we need to deliver every day when we're teaching. Next slide is about our percentage of English learners. Again, the blue graphic talks about the number of students who are labeled as English learners in the classroom versus the state average, 30% compared to 10. And last but not least is the way the state of Connecticut categorizes high needs. Those are students who are identified as English learners, special education, or eligible for free and reduced lunch. Wyndham has a significant number of students who qualify or who are identified as high needs, 70%. Lots of little blue people in our infographic versus 45 across the state. So again, the unique needs of Wyndham requires us to have a program that matches those needs.
Okay, so how did Imagine It and Journeys compare with ARC? Journeys offered one story a week, and it was as simple as that. If our students weren't engaged with that story on a Monday morning, they're not going to be engaged with that story on a Friday afternoon. ARC is different. ARC gives you a focused question. It encourages research. It encourages reading at your actual interest. It encourages you to look into books and look really deep and read multiple books. Not one, not two, maybe four, five, six books on the same topic to be able to compare what the authors say, to be able to answer a focused question based on multiple sources of data, of information. And it makes the children critical thinkers. They open a book and they see that, hey, these authors say different things. Some of the things are the same, but some of them are different. And that sparks discussions, and it sparks interest, and it makes the kids want to read. It makes the kids want to pick up a book, and it makes the kids want to become experts in their field. They love ARC. Journeys, not so much. Small group instruction. Okay, so I get my Journeys program, and I've got kids who are on grade level, who are above grade level, and who are below grade level. Three levels in my class. I've got 16 kids in my class this year. You know how many levels I have? I have 16. Thank you, ARC, because you provide 18 levels of reading for me so I can differentiate for all my students, and I don't have to run around and look for a million resources. I don't have to hug the coach because I don't know where to look. I don't have to talk to my librarian. I don't have to research. I open my ARC book. I assess them in the beginning of the year, and that tells me their level. It's very, very accurate. It is unbelievably accurate. Those kids are yellow, they're a 1G, they're a 2B. They know it. They pick up those books, and they can read those books. They can't read the books above. They can read most of it, but not all of it. And then those books below, they're confidence builders. They might be on the same topic, but they pick up those books, they enjoy them, they can read them in maybe 10 minutes. They love to read based on their level. They love to read knowing that they want to go to the next level. In fact, I've got four of my students bugging me right now because they're a white-level reader. They're on level, but they want to be a black-level reader. And right now, we don't have it in 4th grade. I'm going to be super disappointed if my students, who wanted to be a black-level reader, get to 4th grade, and they walk into the classroom and they don't see those bins because they're going to be floored. They're going to be disappointed. And they're going to lack, they're going to lose a little bit of initiative and a little bit of ambition that they have based on this wonderful reading program.
Okay, so back with Journeys and ARC. Journeys was something that the students saw that they had to do. They had to read because it was a requirement. So talking about what Kurt said, they had one book at the beginning of the week and had to read it all week. Now with ARC, theirs, we measure for student engagement once a month. The students are involved in that. We talk to them about how they think they're reading. We talk to them about how we perceive that they're reading. Are they engaged during their independent reading time? We teach students how to self-monitor. So even starting in kindergarten with the yellow readers, we're teaching kids how to monitor the first letter of the word. Are you, does that make sense? Like, says horse, and you're saying cow. Does that make sense? It doesn't start with the same sound. So as early as kindergarten, we're teaching them how to be engaged when they're independent reading. We're also, kids every day are picking out their own books. So like Kurt said, they're assigned blue readers. That's the level they are. They come in in the morning, they pick out their books for independent reading time. They've chosen the books they want to read. They're engaged during reading time because they picked those books. We also poll kids during independent reading time. We'll talk more about this. But we conference with kids, and they know what their power goal is. They know what their goal is when they're reading. In kindergarten, a lot of my kids are working on their power words. So they know what power words they're looking for in their books. In their independent reading bags, they have little cards that are their power words that they're working on. So then in the books, they can find those power words. So that's part of it. Well, this is about assessment. So with Imagine It and Journeys, there was weekly assessments. And now with ARC, we have, we're constantly assessing the kids in not an intimidating way. The kids are excited to move up levels, like Kurt said, and they know what the different requirements are for the level they're in. So with Blue, there's about eight different things they have to be able to do. So they know what their goal is. They're working towards it. When they get it, they get to go to the next school. And when they finish all the goals for Blue, then they can move up to the next level. I have something unique. I tutor with the after-school program kids. And what's great about ARC is that since K through 3 is using it right now, I have 2nd graders for tutoring, and they can tell me what level they are. And they see the books in my room, and they wonder why I don't have red bins because I teach kindergarten, and the red's more for 1st and 2nd grade. And I can talk to them about their power goals. And I think that's really important for the whole school to be on the same page. With Imagine It and Journeys, there wasn't a ton of common language, and now there is. So our principals walking through the hallway, and our interventionists, and our coaches, and all the teachers in our school have that common language. And we also have something called School Pace, which is where we put all this information. And with School Pace, it creates a lot of common language amongst grade levels or amongst the district. If a kid moves from Natchog to North Wyndham, all this data follows them.
So building on the early suggestion that students really want to pick out books and read because they're not assigned a question, sorry, they're not assigned a book, they're assigned a question to investigate. So it encourages really thorough reading and a lot of investigation. And it encourages them to really deal with rigorous texts. Because, for example, in our latest unit, our marine animals. I'm no longer, they all seem empowered in the classroom because I've got to be a student. The students want to see how I learn, and they want to see how I produce a project that I'm asking them to produce in class. So they're picking marine animals to study. I pick jellyfish. Now, nobody wanted to study jellyfish before I picked jellyfish. But all of a sudden, the kids who were doing penguins, when they come in after recess, they might pick up a book about jellyfish. And they just want to teach me about the thing I'm studying, about the research report I'm doing. They want to give me facts, and they want to share with me. And all this reading that they're doing about something that they might not have been interested in had them flagging me down during the SBAK assessment. Mr. Hayes, Mr. Hayes! You know what? You don't only ask for a new pencil like that. There's a question on jellyfish. Look, look, look! They were excited. And it wasn't one kid, it was a whole bunch of kids flagging me over to share their enthusiasm for the SBAK test. I've never seen that before.
So Amy is going to pass around some work samples from my students. As Kurt was mentioning before, the students get really invested in what the final project is that they're working on. And so in my class, the first theme that we were working on was bugs, and we did that in Spanish. And so my students were researching a variety of different questions regarding the bugs, and they became experts on one bug. And so as they're doing this, they're practicing the four domains and reaching those target standards for listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And the final products, they were just thrilled. They were, all they wanted to do all day was work on those projects because they were using the authentic texts to find that information. And in the meantime, they're integrating the science and social studies within their reading. And so it's really, really getting them to love reading, and not only to love reading, but to really want to dive into what they're working on. And the frameworks for the teachers are just incredible because they provide such a variety of ways to reach those target standards for all of the different types of learners within our classrooms. So it's a really incredible program. And as you can see by their work samples, they're truly invested in the projects that they're creating. And so that's the same for all of these different units that they're doing. They're doing, they're aiming to complete a final project at the end of each of the units. And so they become really invested in the work they're doing, and all they want to do is keep learning. And it's really incredible to see.
So this slide shows you what the resources are when you are using ARC for the classroom. So on this side, you can see some pieces of the toolkit, which is what the teacher would be using with his or her small groups to deliver instruction. In the middle there, you can see, it looks like they're studying the marine animals there. So we've got the unit books for the research unit. And then they've also got some of their wide reading baskets. So this is typical of what you would see in a classroom at any time of the year with units 1, 2, 3, or 4. We have four units that we follow. And I did bring some of that for tonight after the meeting. If you are able to take a look at some of the books that are in there, they're pretty amazing. I wanted to bring more. I had so much more, but there's so many stairs.
Actually, I think what we might do, since I saw you huffing and puffing and carrying all those in, we might take a 5-minute recess and let the board members look at them so you don't have to wait until the end of the meeting for us to look at them.
That'd be great, and then we can talk a little bit. So this slide shows you what is comprised in the toolkits. And each grade level gets up to a certain color that their students might be working at. So there's yellow, there's green, there's blue, red, white, and so on. And the toolkits are wonderful because there are so many elements to teach in foundational reading skills. When you are working with the kids in the toolkit, you go to the manual, and it guides you to the skills that the students need to work on. And in addition to using that manual, it provides beautiful, quality instructional materials to use with the kids. I've been a reading interventionist for a long time before I was a coach, and I used a lot of different programs, and they were all very packaged. And if you were a struggling reader, you sort of felt like you were a struggling reader when you were using those. But these materials are beautiful. You wouldn't know that you were struggling, and in some cases, you're not because you're using the toolkit to build your students up in Ms. Slater's classroom. She has students that are excelling at the next grade level, and she's using the materials to teach, to front-load those skills that the kids need. And then a couple of people have talked about the ERLA and the ANEEL. So that's the assessment system that we use. It's a spiral-bound book. I brought one of each for you to take a look at. And any classroom teacher or support staff person, literacy coach, reading interventionist, special ed teachers, they can use this to assess the kids and find the level that they're starting at. So there are checklists, there are some stories that the kids will read, and there's criteria that go along with each color level. And once you're trained, you know what you're looking for in order to place the students in those levels. And then after we've got them in there, we take a look at what are going to help, what skills are going to help our students move out of, build their skills in that level, and eventually move them to the next level. So that's what the power goals, what those are. They have different skills that the kids are going to work on. For example, you might need to work on high-frequency words, or we call them tricky words or power words, depending on what color level you're in. So your goal might be to learn those words. So we empower the kids to know what their goals are so that they, when they go back into their independent reading time and they have their books that they've chosen, they're working on those particular skills.
I mentioned before that we were looking for a program that would meet the needs of all of our students in Wyndham, especially knowing that we have dual-language programs in four of our elementary schools. And so ARC comes with materials for both the initial classroom instruction, the grade-level instruction when we're teaching the Common Core standards. That all comes in Spanish. And it's not like other programs where they just take all the English texts and they translate them into Spanish because that's not good instruction for dual-language programs. Good instruction for a dual-language program uses authentic literature. It uses great-quality translations also. But in addition to these materials for the core, we also have these toolkits. This is a toolkit that we use for small-group instruction, but it also comes with toolkits in Spanish. So our Spanish teachers, or our dual-teachers who teach in English and Spanish, are able to give small-group instruction in Spanish. And there's equity in that because they have all the materials they need. One more thing is the assessment system, and I think, Michelle, you brought in ANEEL too. I just want to show them. So we have a refrain in Compañeros, and we say that, sorry, that doesn't come in Spanish, which is what we're used to hearing since the 1990s. But ARC does come in Spanish. And not only does it come in Spanish, you can see they're the same kind of thing, but they took into account how we teach Spanish to new readers, which is different. And so just seeing that and having access to that for all our teachers is really great. We are, we're a team. We're reading buddies. Correlational studies.
Correlational studies consistently reveal a positive relationship between the amount of independent reading and reading proficiency. Simply put, the best readers tend to read the most. More simply put, practice makes you better. And in ARC, you have an opportunity to practice, in kindergarten, we practice up to 30 minutes a day of independent reading. And in grades one through three, they practice up to 60 minutes a day of independent reading. So they have an opportunity of choosing books from all of those book bins that you saw based on their levels. They can pick any number of books. They have a small stack of books, they take them to a private spot, and they do their reading. They can also choose books, in many situations, they could choose from leveled libraries that might already exist in the room. Children have their library books with them, so that there are many opportunities to read books that are at their level, maybe practice books that they are very, very good at, and maybe a little bit of a stretch book with their library book, they can also do that. And in the next few slides, we are going to be looking at some different ways that independent reading happens across the grade levels. So this is a time of day that my students absolutely enjoy the most. It gives them the opportunity to shop for books. And as you'll see in this slide, you'll see that students are sitting here actually reading independently with books of their choice. So you'll see that they have their stack of books where kids are allowed to shop for books from their bins. They make a book stack, they find a reading spot, and they sit and they enjoy their books. My second-grade students right now are close to reading almost an hour of independent reading time a day. And as has been mentioned before, this is the opportunity that they get to practice those skills that they are really confident in, or skills that they even need to work on, along with reading strategies that they've worked on in small-group instruction. So they're able to shop for the things that they enjoy shopping for, and read from the bins and from the books that they really are choosing to enjoy that day. So you'll see that independent reading, it may look different each day. Students can read independently by themselves, they may do some partner reading, they may do cross-grade level, cross-class reading, they may actually do cross-level reading as well. So you might have kids partnered up with somebody that might be a bin colored above, or maybe even a bin colored below, so you can do tri-groups as well. It gives the students an opportunity, being that a lot of the texts are on the same subject, depending on the unit that you're working in. It gives them the opportunity to have genuine conversation about books and topics that they're actually reading about, and books and topics of their interest as well.
This is one of our units, I can pass this around. We did all different ecosystems, and so each week, we would learn about a different ecosystem, and we created books on our ecosystem, so that's my classes. We don't, we're not assigned a research project in kindergarten, but those are my classes' books. So, we went to the Willimantic Public Library for a field trip, and they asked what we were learning about, and at this point, we were learning about the rainforest. So the library, so kindly, planned a whole hour session for us, read us a bunch of books about the rainforest, and then the kids got to create their own rainforest. So you can see the children's librarian and the kids were super excited.
The next three slides sort of reiterate what Dr. Garcia said when she started the presentation, and that is that the ARC program has a green rating with Ed Reports. And for the board's information, Ed Reports is an independent, nonprofit organization that basically vets curriculum to determine whether our quality materials, whether they're aligned, whether they're user-friendly, and whether they will help students to access the standards that they need to master in order to move up levels. And ARC currently is the only K-12 curriculum that gets a green rating across the board in all assessed areas. It's also important to note that our, the Journeys program, and actually, this is the Journeys 2017 program, not the one we're currently using, because our current fourth and fifth grade program needs to be updated. Journeys did not get a single green rating in any of the assessed areas. It is not a quality curriculum to use, so just important note. And again, this is an independent organization that is not making any money by saying whether or not these products are good or bad. They're just basically out to make sure that every student ends up college and career-ready.
So this is Ms. Goodwin, the principal at Wyndham Center. This slide is just to show you that everyone in the school is involved in the whole ARC process. The principals know what to do, the principals can come into our room and ask the kids what level they're at, and they know, and they'll read with the kids. I'm at Natchog, and I can say that Mr. Jones comes into my room all the time and will read with the kids during independent reading time. Yesterday, he was part of our data team meeting, and the first-grade teachers came in and read with the kids. And so, going back to how I was talking about the tutoring kids, everybody in the building knows what's going on and is excited about reading as the kids are. And now we're going to hear about what teachers, and parents, and students are saying about ARC.
All right. So I have the pleasure of presenting some information from my school, and actually, the two people that I have information from are actually here tonight. But, so Jessica Sewell, she's first-grade teacher, she has a quote up here, and you can read it yourself, but it's basically about the level of engagement that she sees with her students. Instead of moaning and groaning when they have to open the book to read, they're moaning and groaning when it's time to put the books away and move on. They're really engaged, they're loving what they're reading about, and they're involved in knowing their levels and knowing what they need to do to improve. And this is a video from Ms. Baumgartner, our principal, talking about how she feels about ARC.
Liz Baumgartner, I'm the principal at North Wyndham School, and I've been the principal here for the last five years. I want to take a moment to tell you a little bit about our story with ARC. We, out of all of the schools, have actually had ARC in our school for the last two years. We implemented, or we piloted, two years ago with only compañeros in grades K through five. And so we are also the only school that has it in fourth and fifth grade, and so our teachers will be able to really talk about how ARC has been successful for us here at our school. It has made a huge difference for us in regards to students, and student motivation in wanting to read. One of the things that I noticed as we were doing observations throughout our building, we would look around, and I would do instructional rounds, and I was always wondering, you know, our students, our teachers are working hard, our students are working hard, but I'm not seeing kids enough in books. And so, one of the things that I immediately noticed about ARC, once we got it into the hands of students and teachers, was that kids were really immersed in books, they had access to great literature, and also, they made connections not only to, you know, they were able to look at books and make a connection to themselves. The ARC resources are wonderful, and our students, by far, love them more than any other books I think they've ever had their hands on. So, we do see an intrinsic motivation for students who want to read, and I think there's that also, because they're moving from level to level, students are able to really gauge how far they have to go and how hard they have to work in order to be able to get to the next level. That's something that they like to do, and they're so proud when they move from one level to the other. In regards to teachers, one of the things that I noticed immediately is that teachers had access to their data for their students, they're able to look at goals, be able to clearly talk and discuss in conference with students regarding where they're going to go from one level to the next. And also, they have a toolkit that they're able to access and know right away what it is that their kids need to work on, and it's super hyper-focused, and you don't waste a lot of time trying to figure out where is it exactly that my kid, where my kids are at. So I think for teachers, it's been a great tool to be able to learn from, and then be able to implement in the classroom, and do so in a way that's seamless, and also provides a resource for them to be able to clearly go into School Pace, for example, and be able to access their student data, and be able to look at it, be able to conference with their students, and also be able to discuss in length about where their kids need to go to next. I love ARC, Joe Amel Arc, and so I, it is my hope that our district continues to support our teachers by having ARC as a resource in their classrooms. Thank you. Bye.
So, I'm going to read to you a letter from Raquel Luna, who is, she has a really unique perspective, because she's a parent of a student who attends North Wyndham School. She also serves on their Governance Council, but she's also a second-grade teacher at Natchog School. So, not only does she understand this program from within the classroom, but with a home lens, okay? And I think you have this in your packets. Dear members of the Wyndham Board of Education, I am writing in regards to the district implementation of the American Reading Company curriculum. I hope to see its continued use in the district. My daughter is a first-grade student at North Wyndham School and started using American Reading Company last year during its pilot year when she was in kindergarten. My daughter has enjoyed using the reading program and is able to explain what skills and goals she is working on in reading. I think this is important, as it is helping her develop stronger work habits and gives her more ownership of her own learning and education. She is excited about reading and is able to pick books that interest her and are appropriate for her. She also understands what reading level she is working towards for the end of the school year. As a parent, I like the program because I am able to support what is being done in the classroom. Each level comes with a skill card that lets me know what my daughter is working on. I also receive lists of sight words that go along with each level. I know that what I am doing at home aligns with what her teachers are doing at the school. The books that come in her reading bag are just right for her, too. This makes supporting her Spanish reading at home easier, because I know the books aren't too hard. I hope to see the American Reading Company program expanded to fourth and fifth grade, because it has been such a positive reading program for my daughter. I feel other parents would like it as well. Sincerely, Raquel Luna, as a North Wyndham School parent and school Governance Council member, and a staff member at Natchog Schools.
Okay, so just to recap, there's some data points. Would you like, there's some data points just comparing what we know about how ARC has had a positive impact on the students in North Wyndham specifically, because they're in year two of implementation. So we pulled the scale score growth from the, average scale score growth for the entire state, which you can see is 33 points between 2017 and 2018. The fourth and fifth graders at, in the compañeros program, actually had an average scale score growth of 41 points, so exceeded the state average. And our students who did not have access to ARC in fourth and fifth grade are slightly below the state average at 32 points. So we're already seeing gains on the state assessment, and we're proud of that. We want that to continue. This is just an invitation, I don't know if you want to extend the invitation, Dr. Garcia?
So we want to thank, well, we want to thank all the teachers for being here tonight. We really appreciate your presentation, your commitment to ARC, and more than anything, what you shared tonight is the passion that your student, the growth that you're seeing in your students in the building. And we like the opportunity to hear from you, because you are the one in the classroom, how this is working for our kids. Everything that we do should be based on what works for kids. When we make a decision, the decision is, who does this benefit? And we know that this program benefits kids. And as I said before, I have to be convinced by you, and I have been convinced by you. And I actually, as a mother, can see Destiny is using this also, and I can see how she had developed those reading skills, and she loves reading now.
And if any board members want to come in and see it in action, we're inviting you to come into any of the classrooms, anyone here, and actually, anywhere K to three across the district, we'd love for you to come and see it in action.
So we're hoping that, you know, we could have this program for K, for four and five next year. That's the intention. I'm pretty sure that four will get it, and we'll have to work on getting it for five.
Any question? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to say thank you very much, and I was thinking it would be fun to go back to school and start over again and have this kind of reading program. I think it would be, this has been taped, we should send it to ARC, and maybe they'll give us a discount. And use it as an advertisement for the program, because it was pretty much an amazing advertisement for the program, and...
They did a great job.
And people may have some... I, I think it would be great if people have a few questions, but also, maybe we could just take a, you know, five-minute recess, everybody could stand at ease, and the board members could go ask questions and look at the, at the, at the books. They're very, very different than how many of us imagine the books that teach reading.
Spot doesn't chase the ball anymore.
Are there any questions before we break? Okay, let's take, it's 7:50, let's take a, you know, five-minute break, and then come back and move on to the next item on the agenda. We're going to reconvene, folks. Yes? Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
It's very interesting.
We're going to use my invitation.
We're going to continue meeting, but feel free, yeah, feel free to pack up and thank you so much.
Great job, ladies.
That was, that was really, I meant it when I said the ARC program should have seen that advertisement. So, the next item on the agenda under discussion items is the reading needs assessment. And, Dr. Garcia, the reading needs assessment is the next item?
Oh, that was very briefly, after hearing the wonderful presentation of ARC and the progress that we make in ARC. Next year, not this year, we want to couple this with a reading need assessment to see what else needs to be done at the middle and the high school for reading. So, I'm not going to spend much time about it tonight, but we will have a needing read assessment to look at how we can move ARC, oh, not move ARC, what needs to be done at the middle and the high school reading to make sure that more kids are reading on level as they move up to the next grade.
The research, the research is always, and I've been saying, you know, I've been a broken record on the idea that we need to get children reading at grade level by the end of grade three, because the research says if we do that, we can actually afford to keep them there through high school. If we don't do that, it gets very expensive to try and catch them up, and there's a point at which you can't catch them up, it's just more than we can afford to do. But if we do have the children reading at grade level by grade three, we do have to follow through in middle school and high school to keep them at reading level. It's just that we've now created a program where, going forward, it's doable. I think the real payoff for this program will show up in six years when these third graders end up in ninth grade, and we have a class of ninth graders that are at reading level, which will be a little different. And I think the students will be happier and less frustrated because they'll actually be able to deal with the ninth grade material, because they can actually read at the level they're supposed to be able to.
I think we're in a very good position when we have students, teachers, and administrators all supporting a program, and I forgot to say, parents. Parents have come to me asking me that during the summer, we could work with the library to have the art materials in the library or label the books. So, we have parents supporting this program, we have teachers, we have administrators, we have students, and so we'll be working with the library to see how we can have art materials in the library this summer. And that was a request of the parents.
Not just the Wyndham Library, but there's the library in South Wyndham and in Wyndham Center.
Wyndham Center, right.
Both of those, also.
Okay.
Are there any other questions, comments on this section of the agenda? Okay, that was a very good show and tell, I would say. I'm dating myself, but, so now we're going to go back up to reports on the agenda. Oh, and before we go into reports, Mr. De Sounier asked me to extend his apologies. He has a, four crews out, a couple of crews out, and there's an emergency at his work, and they needed him to be there, so he sends his apologies for folks for the rest of Agenda, the Agenda, but he had to step out unexpectedly. So, we're on to the superintendent's reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Those couple announcements, you have the packet with you, I'm not going to go over all of them, but I think we do want to highlight that the high school bond shoot competition, our high school student have moved from 500 students that competed school in the country, they are in the top 50 now, so that's very, congratulations to the high school. Congratulations to, and thank you to the, all the teachers and all the students that participated in the lock-in night on Friday. Dr. Sewell was there, Dara Bowling is the coordinator, and she's done this for a year, and you were there, thank you, thank you to everyone that was there. And so, we want to thank Ms. Bowling for really putting this together, and what a great activity for our students. Wyndham Barrows and North Wyndham students are headed to the Competition Innovation Convention, and we want to congratulate them also, those students, North Wyndham School, yes, at North Wyndham School and Barrows. And we have Gullina Chereria, that she will feature in the Chronicle as the Athlete of the Week on April 24th. We want to congratulate her. We also want to congratulate Jenny Rivera Navarro, she will receive the NWA CP Service Award, Community Service Award, and Jenny Rivera is our before and after-school coordinator, so congratulations to her. There are lots of other accomplishments, but I think you could read those in your packet.
Does anybody have any questions, comments about that?
Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
If you wanted to come to the event to wish Jenny well, there's tickets, I have tickets for $50 for that dinner, lunch, lunch, dinners, 12 to 5, at the Lakeside Restaurant in Coventry.
What's the date?
Oh, I'm sorry, June 1st, 12 to 5.
Okay, thank you.
Same date, a lot of things happening lately. We'll be our community expo, we are looking forward to the community expo. This is a great event. We have people, how many people we're planning to have come out to left this time? How many, how many vendors do we have this year coming in?
Right now, we have about 17 sign up, we expect another 10.
Yeah, so this is a great event for the entire family to come. We have children face painting and all different events. Each school would have a table, so it's really a family event. So, we have two big events taking place, taking place that day. Just a little overview of state assessment in your packet, those two, they're taking place right now, and SPAC is taking place in the school, so if you go to a school, you will see that lots of sign that testing is taking place. And the SAT are coming, the scores are coming in already, and we're seeing those, we gave you the report, but we're very pleased with what we see, the results that are coming in from the SAT. And also, you have the date for the kindergarten screening and orientation, and you also have middle school sixth grade orientation that will be May 23rd, and the kindergarten registration took place May 9, 10, and 11. And you also have the orientation scheduled for the high fifth graders for...
For the ninth grade.
For the ninth grade also. So, you have those dates in your packet, and...
I'm sorry, there's no times.
No time, but they will get those times. The middle school orientation, they do one at night, and they do one in the morning.
Five to seven, yeah.
Five to seven? That's the, that's the night one, but they do one in the morning where the parents come and can have lunch with their students also.
1:15 to 2:30, that's the parents only.
Yeah.
It doesn't say what time the students go.
The one before that, so put the time, the parents come and have whatever time, the parents, the students have lunch, then the parents come and have lunch with the students. That's new, and parents do like that. And then we have the force reading of the revised policy of recruitment, 3323, and I will, I know that Mrs. Ilde Ray will comment on that when it's policy time.
During the policy committee report.
Yeah.
Any questions on any of this? So, we're on to committee reports. So, it's a busy time of year for the Finance and Audit Committee, and we have a budget hearing. I'm going to take a moment just right now to say that the Board of Finance has set the hearing date and time to hear about the town and the Board of Ed budgets. That will be next Wednesday, May 15th, at 6:00 PM at the Bellingham Auditorium at Town Hall, and I just want to say again, May 15th at 6:00 PM at Town Hall is the hearing before the Board of Finance Committee. The Board of Ed budget will be up for, at that hearing, and that will be the time that individuals who have, who want to advocate for the budget should be showing up and testifying before the Board of Finance Committee. They could make decisions that night, right after the hearing, about, about the, about the budget. So, I just want to put that out there for the public and encourage people to come and show support for the school budget. And then we're going to hear from the Finance and Audit Committee, and I'm sure there'll be a little more detail about where we are with things on that front.
So, the Finance and Audit Committee met at 6:00 PM this evening, but before I jump into the report, I do want to explain the shirt. As the superintendent mentioned, Ms. Ray and I were at the lock-in for reading last Friday, and some of the students asked me if I would wear the shirt for the evening. So, this is the Force Five T-shirt that you got, if you participated in that. It's, it was a really good event for a lot of students. I certainly appreciate the staff that were willing to spend the, the night supervising or chaperoning, or however you call it these days for that sort of event, but a lot of really great young people who, and the, Sean Henderson, the author of young people's books that a number of the students read, is a great opportunity for students to read books that they can relate to, that taught empathy for one another, and it was a really positive perspective on Wyndham High School and its students, and I think everyone should know that, because everyone doesn't get to go and actually see it up close and personal. It was really good. Okay, so Finance and Audit, the monthly report, budget report will be out possibly by Friday, but certainly by next Monday. We are getting down to the last couple of months of the fiscal year, and there are a number of complexities in trying to get all of the numbers for, you know, what we spent and what we are committed to spending together, and so, to try and get the, try and get an accurate report, the Finance Director has asked for a few extra days. Okay, so, at the Board of Finance's last meeting, they voted to reduce the budget request that the Board of Education had proposed in their budget for the next fiscal year from 4.02% to 2.5%. I'm not really sure why they pulled 2.5% out of the air, but in dollars and cents, it's almost $728,000. So, the public hearing next week will be an opportunity for people to make a case for putting all or some of that money back into the budget so that we don't lose things that we might otherwise lose. There's not a whole lot of places where you can find ways of saving money in the proposal that we made. The reason that we're at 4% is because last year, our costs went up by three, but the voters only voted for 1.35. So, we have catch-up in this budget, as well as the expected increases over the next year, which will be about 3% or so. So, I asked the superintendent to let us know what would happen if we have to live with 727,000 and change, less than we had proposed. There are a couple of things that, that we probably should do anyway, one of which is a savings of about a little over $71,000 by having a reading coach paid for out of alliance funding rather than general fund budget. And we have been paying a service called Delta T for some help with substitute paras and staff support, not classroom teachers, but people that support classroom teaching. Delta T's contract has proven more expensive than it looks like it would cost us to return to doing that task in-house, and we can save about $70,000 by going back. Now, the old method is not quite as efficient, but it would save $70,000. So, so there's $141,000 there that the Board of Finance cut that we can probably find a way to survive anyhow, although I'm sure if we had the $141,000, we could find useful places to put it, assistant librarians, paras, support staff of one kind or another, we certainly need it. But the big items to get down to 725 would be essentially using money that we had intended to use for capital improvements to pay for the ARC program that we just discussed for the fourth grade. And that'd be $250,000 out of what would be used for capital improvements, and another hundred, $250,000 for curriculum equipment. So, we're trading off capital improvements for fourth grade textbooks and curriculum equipment and deferring the capital, now, when you defer capital improvement, they don't go away, it just means the stuff deteriorates further, and you got to pay for it later. So, that's kind of kicking the can down the road. The other thing, especially after the presentation tonight, would be it would delay buying the ARC program for the fifth grade. And I understand that teachers would prefer to have all the kindergarten to fifth-grade students on the same reading program and not have one grade, even though students are still marching through grades, so we've got students that have gone K to three, they'll get it in the fourth grade next year, they'll be looking for it in the fifth grade the year after that, but we really ought to have it in all the classrooms. So, I'd like to make the case to the Board of Finance that we ought to have the money to buy that for the fifth grade. And then there's another $86,500 in maintenance budget that we're going to try to hold flat. Now, that's deferred maintenance. I'm really reluctant to do that, because if you defer maintenance, things continue to deteriorate, so what would have cost us $86,500 this year will probably cost us $100 next year, because things will wear out even more. So, anyway, and this, these proposed reductions, I think we can probably get added to the website so that everybody can see them, and I would hope that the people that have an interest in this would go speak with the Board of Finance about it, because, and to your neighbors, because even if the Board of Finance is kind enough to put some of this money back into the proposed budget, it still has to pass at referendum. So, I mean, one of the reasons that the Board of Finance is reluctant to approve the increase that we asked for is they're concerned that it just won't pass, and then we'll have to have another budget vote for less money anyway. So, it's not only important that we ask them to allow us to put this, this proposal in front of the voters, but it's also important that parents and people living in town support schools and vote for it. Otherwise, things are going to get dicey, and that's essentially where our committee ended the meeting, with this meeting.
So, does anybody have anything who was in that meeting to add to? So does anybody have anything who was in that meeting to add to, to the report that was given or any questions? Yes, Tracy?
I have a question that I didn't think of, Dr. Sewell was just talking now. Earlier this year or the end of last year, we talked about how the M. and J. contract is up for renewal or not, and we were going to put out an RFP or an RFQ.
It's done.
It's done?
It's done.
Are we going to get an update about that?
I think, I think I put it in the, in the weekly to the board. It's due on the fifteenth.
Fifteenth?
Fifteenth. I put it in the weekly to the board. It's out.
The RFP is due by the fifteenth?
No, it's out already. It's out. The RFP is out.
Right. The responses are due back.
Coming up to the fifteenth.
That's what I'm saying. It's due back by the fifteenth. Okay, thank you. I, I may not, I may have just missed it or forgotten.
Yeah, put it in the weekly, yeah.
It just came up because that has, transportation is a huge, is a huge driver of our, you know, our expenses. And if that contract is going to go up, and it'd be great if it went down by some, you know, vendor, but if it goes up, that's something else we have to really be concerned about.
Absolutely.
Sorry, thank you.
Absolutely. That's a big ticket. I have a question, since I couldn't get here in time to come to the, the meeting that you had at six. When you, it's interesting to see this proposal for decreasing, I mean, dealing with a seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand some odd dollar cut, five hundred thousand of it coming from deferring things in the capital project budget. What is being deferred? Can you, can we say?
Yeah.
What's being deferred with that five hundred K?
Yeah, so, so we had put five hundred, five hundred K. in, in the capital improvement as we have done in the past to, to provide textbooks. And we are starting the cycle for the math textbook, should be the cycle. So what we'll be deferring is textbooks. For example, K. five will not be able to get their art material, and we'll be deferring the cycle for math textbook for another year.
Math textbooks? For what grades?
Well, we're looking at K. through five.
K. through five? And art?
Art with, with this now.
The fifth grade arc.
The fifth grade arc is.
Oh, arc, okay.
Fifth grade arc is in limbo. The reading program, the one that you don't serve.
Plus the math textbooks have been delayed here.
So in this budget cycle, they're supposed to be fourth and fifth grade reading ARC books.
Right, so, right, just doing fourth. Because I'm just want to make sure when I communicate with folks, I'm trying to get people to come to the hearing, that I'm being accurate with what the trade-offs are.
So that does raise a question. If we delay upgrading the math program, are we going to end up getting caught out by a publisher that stops supporting the program that we're currently using?
Well, I can't answer that. I don't have any information about the textbook that we're using in that. It does say it's a cycle for renewal. I don't have that information. I'm not aware of that.
But if, if, because this is what happened, this is basically one of the things that pushed us into ARC. When we pushed into ARC was because the, the previous publisher said, "We're not doing that anymore." Poof! So presumably, the math publisher could, since the, if, if we're ready for renewal cycle, they're going to look at those as obsolete books. And we could face a situation where the, if the publisher is no longer supporting the curriculum, because, you know, it's not just books.
Right.
It's, it's all the support that goes with the books. That's what we're really paying for. The books are only a fraction of the cost of these programs. If the publisher's not supporting it, we're pretty much compelled to replace it.
But the reality is that if we buy the books, the publisher could still decide not to support those programs next year. There is no decision, just because we are renewal, doesn't, there's no textbook person going, "When will Wyndham renew their books?" And then we won't support them anymore. They're not going to support those textbooks at some point.
Well, no, if we go to the next generation, when you go to these renewal cycles, you're basically going to the next addition of the next generation of books.
But they will inform us.
Our renewal cycle, not their renewal cycle.
Yeah, they will inform us about it.
We don't know the answer to that.
Right, we don't.
Yeah, but there's a possibility that, that this deferral will end up biting us.
Possibility that all sorts of deferrals will end up biting us.
Yes, deferrals are not necessarily.
But it is interesting to see this, this proposal that tries very hard not to make cuts in administrative positions such as the new ones that were, the new one that was requested for the middle school.
Assistant principal for the middle school, which you really need.
And that the, the support staff for the middle school.
Or teachers, or teacher.
Or teachers. And we did have a discussion about not trying to base it, base cuts on attrition because attrition has no rhyme or reason necessarily, right? We don't know who's going to decide to leave, so. Anybody have any questions, comments on this? So unless there's a great objection, this is the, this is the proposed way we would deal with that seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars that we're putting out to the public at this point. And, and we'll see what happens next week at the hearing, but I encourage people to come and speak up. It has been suggested to us by Board of Finance members that who comes and speaks that night makes a big difference. And they would very much like to hear from parents and community members. Not that teachers and Board of Ed members aren't good spokespeople, but I think they really want to hear what people in the community are thinking and what parents are thinking. And so I encourage people who are watching this, if you care about the schools, to come and speak up next week. And if for some reason you have to work or you have a big family obligation, the other option is to submit something in writing to the Board of Finance, which you certainly could do. We have a Board of Finance member here, and it's okay, Josh, if people submit comments to you all? Okay.
And they can go to the.
They can get the address on the town website.
Town website, find email addresses and addresses to mail whatever they need to send.
Right, or if, if you send your comments to the Board of Ed, we'll submit them for you too, if, if you don't, can't figure out how to get them to the Board of Finance. Anything else on Finance and Audit?
I want to be careful how we do that, though, because the referendum date has been set.
Yes.
So technically, the Board of Ed is in its silent period, and we're not allowed to advocate. So I think that we should let them send them directly to the Board of Finance.
But I think we could hand them testimony.
It's in the affirmative. It's just a fuzzy line, that's all. I just don't want anyone to get into trouble down the line, that's all.
Okay, well, if you're confused about how to get your testimony to the Board of Finance, you can always reach out to one of us.
Right.
We can certainly advise you on how to do that.
I just want to protect us, that's all.
Yeah. And what Tracy was referring to, in case people are confused, is that the, that the date for the referendum, the budget vote, has actually been set for June fourth. It's a Tuesday, June fourth. And so that's when people will be asked to go vote one way or the other.
So the schools administration and staff can't advocate for the budget, but any of us can. Board of Education members are not subject to the, quote, "silent." So if comments are submitted to the Chair of the Board of Education, he can certainly bring them to the attention of the Board of Finance without worrying about that.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. The next thing is school planning and design.
I had a meeting last Thursday. Dr. Sewell was there, Ms. Glutia was there, and we discussed lots of different things that are going on within the district and upcoming things for the summer. A architect company has been selected by the district. I sat in on the interviews, and that was brought forth in the packet. That wasn't available, apparently, during my meeting time. So that's something that's on the agenda for discussion tonight. Also, what Dr. Sewell was saying about budget issues, people come to the board meeting or they're on social media or they see me or someone on the board, and they say, "The reason the budgets are so expensive is because you're not taking care of your buildings." Well, we're trying to take care of our buildings, but when we're looking at keeping our funding flat on maintenance and improvements year to year, or decreases, because that's an easier place than staffing and stuff like that, to cut services and cut maintenance and upgrades, this is what happens when, as Dr. Sewell would say, you kick that can down the road. Now, we can't do upgrades. We can't do maintenance. We have to defer it for yet another year. That makes our buildings less compliant. Not, they've never been unclean, but less clean than we possibly can make them. It differs things like painting and tile replacements unless there's asbestos and other things that we do, energy-efficient things that we do over the summer especially to make our buildings more appropriate for twenty-first learning. So it's just another way that the budget affects other, other areas of our board, not just teaching and learning. Also, I wanted to say that we have been informed that Dr. Garcia is in the final stages of selecting a facilities person. I am thrilled to have that happen while working with Mr. Harris has been wonderful. He is not a facilities manager, and a lot of the questions that we've had. Also, I'd like to encourage Dr. Garcia to see if we can't find out about what we're doing with the oil tanks. Are we switching to propane or not? I think we need to possibly give a nice little nudge to the state and find out if we can move on that because I believe our DEEP deadline is September, and we need to get the town to make a building committee to do this, and we need to get our plans and our drawings. We need to hire a contractor. I have my, you know, complete doubts that it'll be done by September. I'm hoping it'll be initiated by September and that DEEP will give us yet another extension, and we can't keep doing this forever.
Right.
These oil tanks need to come out, and the ones that need to be replaced need to be replaced. The city ones are hooked up to the natural gas lines, but the two out in the Wyndhams, it is cost prohibitive to hook them up. I think we looked at three and a half million dollars for each school to hook them up to gas lines. And so we're looking at switching them over to propane or leaving them oil. And if we don't get an answer soon, we're going to be in violation of DEEP's deadline. So that was one of the things that came forward. Dr. Sewell, did I miss anything that you can think of?
I think so.
I had notes. Mary?
I was just thinking of the building committee meeting. There was a question about some access to the grounds.
The high school building committee?
Yeah, the high school building committee.
And working with summer school?
Well, aside from that, the, like, the surveyors couldn't get access to some drains or something to do some testing. I, I, I'm not sure there was.
They did get.
Okay.
Need to do a dye test, yeah.
Yeah, they did get in.
Okay. Right, and then there's going to be a lot of discussions about how to use the school and do the phasing. That's going to be complicated.
And that may be a small problem during summer school of this year, but it'll probably be a significant problem next year when we're actually in the construction phase. So those were things we discussed. Thank you, Mary. That's it?
Are there any questions for the, the School Planning and Design Committee? Thank you for all your hard work. Policy Committee.
That'd be me, hello.
Hello.
I'd like to say happy Teacher Appreciation Week for the teachers. Thank you for your service to our kids. I know. I didn't think of it. That's me, always thinking about it later. So anyway, so we met last week, thanks to Dr. Youngberg, Mr. Pavone, and Mr. Vole. We spent much time on, well, we had four policies on our agenda. The graduation requirement, which is tabled, which is almost ready, but we had to table that. We have also revisiting the magnet schools, the outside attendance district policy. We're, had to table that.
What do you mean by outside attendance, just to be clear?
Out of district?
Out of district.
Out of district.
Yes, yes, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Outside, outside of school.
Yeah, because somebody listening to that may think, you know, people can attend school by standing outside, you know? No, out of district attendance issues.
Out of district, yes, out of district. And so tonight, we'll be bringing the special education policy for a second reading. And the one that we worked on the whole, pretty much the majority of the time, is the procurement business, non-instructional operations, which we are bringing to you tonight for the first reading. And that's it.
Is there anything you want to say about the first reading one, procurement business and non-instructional operations?
Well, Mr. Vole is here, and that's his baby. So can I, can I ask him to step up to the mic and, and answer any questions you may have?
You can come up to Mike.
Good evening, Board members.
You, you could give us a quick overview of what that is, so in case people who read it in today's packet couldn't. Had questions? You need to use the mic.
Thank you, Ilda. So just to point out, policy three-three-two-three is on purchasing and procurement, and this pertains to non-instructional operational departments such as mines, such as facilities, such as I.T. The policy that's existing is, the last revision to that policy was back in two thousand and five. And it's a very confusing and redundant way of laying out such a policy. I've been in the district for over six years, and I still can't pull the information out of this policy as I need it, as it would pertain to procurement for things in my department. And I do a lot of purchasing, so I can only imagine how difficult it might be for other departments that need to use the policy or to make sure they're following state and federal and local guidelines when making purchases. I can answer specific questions about this policy, but I think it might be best fit if I lay out the three tiers of purchasing guidelines, and then we can go back and backfill any questions that you may have, if that's okay with the Board.
I think tonight, we just really need a, you know, basic overview.
Okay, so the federal threshold on what's known as a micro purchase currently is ten thousand dollars. The state of Connecticut doesn't have their own purchase thresholds. They follow the federal governments. In this case, I'm not proposing we adopt the federal version. The federal version for a micro purchase, which means there is no bids or quotations needed, is ten thousand dollars. You can go out and make an immediate purchase. The next is called a simple acquisition threshold. That's not what we're calling it here in Wyndham, but that's from seventy-five, that's from, for federal, from ten thousand dollars all the way to two hundred and fifty thousand. And then two hundred and fifty thousand and above would be an RFP or an RFQ. What I'm proposing for Wyndham to update the current policy is a micro purchase threshold of from zero dollars to seventy-five hundred dollars, which would require no quotations or any sort of bidding whatsoever. We would put a preference on local business, but we will select the lowest price when making these purchases when possible. The second tier, if you look on the second page of the policy as, as written, is in, known as number two, and this is called the competitive quotation process. So this is used for purchases of seventy-five hundred dollars all the way up to twenty thousand dollars. And what this says is, we will go out when, before making purchases, and solicit three quotes. And those three quotes will, will be asked of our vendors, whether we do it by email or phone or solicit through a newspaper ad. We will then get our three quotes, we'll analyze those quotes, and we'll make a purchase based on the lowest price. No RFP, no RFQ required. The third tier, Roman numeral number three, also on the second page, is the competitive bidding process. This speaks to any purchases that are made for non-instructional purposes, meaning operations of twenty thousand dollars or more. The existing policy is written this way. It's just very confusing to get the information from the policy, so I'll explain it. And that's, anything above twenty thousand dollars, we solicit a request for proposal or request for quote from, and we do this by soliciting the vendors publicly. So we would go to the State Department of Administrative Services and post on their site, or we could do it in the local newspaper here, the Hartford Current, the radio, there's many avenues. We would, what we're proposing is, we must post this for a minimum of five days. That doesn't necessarily mean it's a max. Depending on the size of the project and the scope of the project, we would then determine how long we should keep this bid out for to solicit. The more, the more bidders, the better chances of driving down the price. And so that would be in our best interest. But we're asking for a minimum of five days to post for those purchases. That's it. In a nutshell, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions?
So why break points that are different from the federal?
Well, in my initial thought was, ten thousand dollars for a micro purchase might be a little aggressive, you know, for a smaller district with having, whether you have one person doing the purchasing. But I'm just thinking, without the layers of protection, it's probably best to keep that number down slightly. I, I would not oppose to having a micro purchase up to ten thousand dollars. But what gets scary, I think, is for people in positions that are maybe new to that position or new to purchasing with this amount of money, giving someone flexibility from ten thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars without having to solicit any quotes or bids could get dangerous.
Okay, so I, I understand why two hundred and fifty is too high, but you only go, what, to twenty?
That's because that's the existing language in the policy. I don't find that to be a problem with my department, and I'm speaking to Brendan in the past, our, our previous facility director, that didn't seem to be an issue. From seventy-five hundred to twenty thousand, for us to go out and solicit three quotes is, is not a big deal. We make three phone calls, we get three quotes coming back. It's not time-consuming.
I was thinking, you, you mentioned that the policy hadn't been revised in fourteen years. So we're looking at somewhere between ten and fifteen years' worth of inflation on today's numbers. So, so I, I think twenty might be a little on the low side.
And I'm going to agree with you, but when I, when I was looking at the inflation numbers, I, I said the same thing. I, I made some phone calls, and we just thought maybe the Board would be, maybe would adopt the policy a little bit quicker. Maybe would adopt the policy a little bit quicker if we kept thresholds where they were in the second and third tier, but it wouldn't hurt to increase them either.
We'll take this up.
This is the first reading.
Yeah, this is the first reading. We'll take this up later, but that's a number we might want to discuss.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we might want to consider that, but we kept the numbers aligned with the bidding for the instructional bidding. So the same procedure for the instructional bidding. Anything over 20,000 require a competitive bid.
Yeah, well...
So I mean, if the Board recommend, then we could change it. I mean, we stayed with this one right now, but we kept the numbers aligned.
I don't propose to settle that number tonight. I just wanted to know why it was where it is.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Mark?
Step one, the initial thing, 75,000 or 7,500. You had indicated there was a local preference in that?
So, yes, I personally, not that it was... It's required. We would give a preference on local businesses.
So if there's no... So that was my question. If there's no bidding process, how do I, as a local businessperson, know that you're even making that purchase so I can say, "Why didn't you see me?"
So it was being the local purchase, it's mainly those small purchases that you need in a hurry. So we would shop locally within our region first because they are such small purchases. We most likely wouldn't be going out of state or even out of town. Most of those purchases for my department would be very small equipment, things that break and we need to replace in a hurry.
So you're going to give the local preference?
I would give the local. We would give the local preference.
It's not like a competitive process where if I'm a local person, I can say, "Why didn't you consider me?" You're going to give the local preference.
Correct. With all things held equal, we would consider the local, but in this case, it wouldn't be necessary.
And for what it's worth, I would agree with the 20,000 limit. I don't see any need to go above that. Unlike, if we're going to consider for future, I would stick with that 20,000.
Well, we're not taking action on it tonight, so this is all helpful for us because we will take action on it the second reading.
And just so you're aware, on the third tier, the 20,000 or above does require Board approval as well, not just the RFP, but then Board approval. And I didn't mention that, I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the Policy Committee? Okay. Finally, Executive Committee. At our last meeting, which was last week, we spent a fair amount of the agenda talking about the budget, upcoming budget hearing and budget referendum and discussion around strategy having to do with that. We also discussed, again, finalizing a evaluation tool to present to the superintendent and to work with the superintendent on to complete an evaluation this summer. And there's a team of Board members who volunteered to help come up with the final tool in the next month, so we expect that by June... Proposed final evaluation tool in early June at our meeting then. And the other thing I just wanted to report on as the Chair of the Board is that on Good Friday, I met with the forensic analysis audit firm that is working on this issue. There is one... Was one initial interview with me as the Chair of the Board and our attorney and I've signed a contract and that financial analysis is underway right now. And once it started, we really, as the Board of Ed, have no contact with the persons performing the analysis. They base it on interviews with people in the district, staff, and they may decide over the course of the analysis that there are other people that they will request to interview and a lot of paperwork and documentation is presented. We hope to get a final report back from them, which will come to the Board here first and will be with our attorney because it's under attorney-client privilege and then we will move forward from there. But I know there have been a lot of questions on social media in particular and in the community about this audit and it's really technically called a forensic analysis because it does more than look at the numbers. It looks at how decisions were made, who might be responsible for decisions that were made and can make recommendations about making changes moving forward, you know, recommended changes moving forward. And the reason that it's off being done over there is so that there can be no interference by people in the process, you know, people in town in the process, whether they be staff or Board members or people in the town who have opinions about things. That's not how these things get done. And so our hope is to have it done by the very end of June, if not before, but that really is dependent on whether or not they get all the materials and get all the interviews that they need to have. So that is where we are at. I know a lot of people on the Board know that. I've explained it to the Board of Finance, but I just want to say for the community, this is being done in a very professional manner and we'll see where we land when we get the report. Are there any questions on that from the Board? Okay. So we're on to action items on the agenda. And the first action item is a recommended approval and second reading of the Wyndham Public Schools Special Education Policy Number 6171. And Ilda, do you want to run us through this? Or you and staff, however you want to deal with it?
Miguel. Miguel Pabon, this is yours.
Yeah, I need a motion first.
A motion to accept the second reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded and so now we can go into discussion.
So we talked about this at the last Board meeting, I believe, and I explained it. I think you have it in your packet. I wondered if you have any questions or if you want me to explain it again?
Do people have any questions?
Did you look at it? Did you look at it?
Yes. I'm assuming we all read it? Is it pretty clear? Is there any highlights you want to share with us, Miguel?
I think it's pretty clear. It's pretty straightforward. There is some new legislation that we wanted to include in here and we took out a couple of items and it's outlined in the packet. Predominantly, the information that was added had to do with annual notices to parents. That's something that we do regularly anyway, however, it wasn't in the policy, so now it is. It's always done.
Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the policy on the changes, the updates to the special education policy? Any opposed? Okay, unanimously approved. The next item is a... The next couple items are fun, so... So, well, not fun necessarily, but this one is a really fun one. Recommended approval of appointment of principal at Charles H. Barrows STEM Academy. Do you want to...
Yes.
Then we'll have a motion and we can't really say it until we know who it is.
Yeah. This is a very nice one. It gives me great pleasure, Superintendent of School, to appoint Mr. Tim McLaren...
Want to come up?
...as Principal of the Charles Barrows STEM Academy. Let me talk a little... Let me present a little bit of bio of Mr. McLaren and then we'll talk about the process. Five years ago, I met Mr. McLaren when I came to Wyndham Public School.
It's McClure.
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 McLaurin, McClure. And Mr. McLaren, Assistant Principal of the High School, signed him some leadership qualities, know that we had to develop that capacity. Made him an offer that he was not too happy to go to the middle school at that time, but it was a good move for him to learn about middle school and I believe you grow a lot there, you learn a lot and you're eager to learn more. It came an opportunity to go to Barrows and I think I'm very pleased with your performance at Barrows. The parents were very pleased, et cetera, et cetera. So congratulations to you. A little bit about the process. We had about 15 candidates that applied for the position. There was a screening committee. The screening committee selected eight people to be interviewed for the first round. Eight were interviewed for the first round. Then there was five interviewed for the second round, eight, and then three were interviewed for the third round and then a recommendation was made to the superintendent after the three final interviews. And Mr. McLaren was the one that was recommended. And the interview process composed of about 12 staff members that includes support staff, teacher, and parents, the PAC also, that is the equivalent of the HGC per se. Barrows had their own interview with Mr. McLaren, Mr. McLaren, and made the recommendation and also their members at the PTO that participated. So it's very inclusive. Secretaries, paras, teachers, administrators, parents from both angle, from the PAC and also from the PTO. So we feel very comfortable that this is the right decision for the students, the families, and the teachers of Barrows and it gave me great honor to recommend Mr. McLaren as Principal of Barrows STEM Academy.
So before you speak, I entertain a motion to approve the recommendation. So move.
Second.
Okay. Suzie and Tracy really said it at exactly the same time. I guess we can...
No, it was Ilda.
I thought it was Ilda. Okay, sorry. And then Murphy. Okay, so now, before we vote, we'd really like to hear from you.
You've been sitting there. You have to know what you're going to say now.
I reviewed a million things on my way here today and those who know my personality, I'm not necessarily short on words always. Shocking, here we are. Well, just want to say thank you to Dr. Garcia and the Board for the opportunity. You know, as somebody who's been a lifelong resident, you know, of Wyndham, growing through the schools, I described in my interview process, I've been in Wyndham Public Schools for 32 years now. Thirteen as a student, 12 as a teacher, and last seven as an administrator. So I've kind of seen it from all ends. I'm humbled and honored for the opportunity to continue to work with the amazing students, staff, parents, of which are here tonight, and community members associated with Barrows so that we can continue to give the students the quality education that they deserve and move forward and make things bigger and better. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions or comments that they'd like to make?
I'm hoping I can start immediately tomorrow morning. Drop the interim tag for my name.
Yes.
That'd be good.
Be a lot shorter.
My next robo-call. I can change the initial sentence, so...
Any comments or questions anybody has?
I've had the opportunity to work with Mr. McClure for quite a few years since Stephen was here at the high school and you've always held yourself very well and been honest and respectful of everyone, so I'm thrilled that you are losing the tag of interim and becoming our full-fledged principal at Barrows, so...
Thank you.
Couldn't happen to a nicer guy.
Yes. So while hearing nothing else, we're going to vote. So all those in favor of the motion on the floor? It's unanimous. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd also add that it's really nice to see someone who's gone to school here, lives here...
Homegrown.
...raising his family here, has chosen to be an administrator within our buildings and is dedicated to Wyndham, has proven his dedication to Wyndham. I'm hoping that more of our homegrown teachers and staff continue to get promoted to the positions they deserve.
Amen to that.
Very, very nice. That's a very happy thing. We've had a couple of really happy things tonight, hearing from the other teachers and having you. Thank you. So, yes, were you going to say something?
He didn't mention that he's a coach for the Little League. My favorite, the Little League, you know, the Little League baseball. He's a coach of the little ones, yes.
Said medical pharmacy was your team this year?
No, 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 that's not my team.
And a former Eagle Scout.
Ooh. So the next item for action on the agenda is recommended approval of revised tuition rates for the Charles H. Barrows STEM Academy and that's in our packets and it's a 1% increase?
There's a 1% increase, right.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to move that we approve an increase in tuition at Charles Barrows STEM Academy by 2%.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to...
Need a second.
And, yes, I know, but I'm just stating what it is. To change, rather than a 1% increase, a 2% increase, which would be from $49 to $98 per student, per year. Is there a second to that motion?
Second for discussion, sure.
Second for discussion. Okay, so we're open to discussion.
I should discuss it since I made it, right?
You should explain your reasoning.
Okay, so we've asked the Board of Finance for 4% increase. Our costs have been going up for at least three. I've been noticing in the papers that are surrounding district... When they passed the budget, I know it was Parish Hills budget failed, but budgets that have passed in surrounding towns have gone up by between 2% and 3%. If we lag in raising the tuition for the Barrows program, we will find ourselves eventually well below where it ought to be and we will be subsidizing students coming to Barrows Academies from sending towns. We really need to keep up with the increase in cost and we're not... Actually, if at 2%, it's less than the increase in cost. 1% is almost not... I mean, why bother? You know, it's almost throwing in the towel. I thought about actually asking for more than 2%, but I think that... I don't think 2% is outrageous. And I think that we... One of the problems that we've had is we didn't start increasing the tuition for Barrows until last year.
We increased it last year by $100.
So, yes, so we're... And we're still behind because, you know, like in the fourth year of the program, we suddenly started catching up with increases in cost. And if we raise it at a smaller rate than, you know, even if at 2%, if we raise for 2% every year and costs go up for 3% every year, we're still going to end up in a situation where we're subsidizing students that are... We're not supposed to be subsidizing. So that's my case.
Any other discussion? Yes, Mark?
I tend to agree with Dr. Sewell that, yeah, I think 1% was why bother. 2% makes more sense if our... Just our salaries have gone up 3%. But I'm more interested in knowing what was the logic at all behind any... I don't... This came to me cold. I had no idea we were considering an increase, so I'd like to hear what the logic was of coming up with the 1%. Where do we devise?
Well, there are a couple of things. So we did increase it last year by $100 per student, not by 1%, but $100. That would be similar to 2%. We are not the lowest, we're not the highest. We're very average. Maybe out of respect and balance with the 26 sending district, let's keep in mind that they are coming from other district and they're coming from districts also that are not per say, super, super-rich district. And we thought since we increased it last year by $100, but I'm not opposed to the 2%, to the $98 whatsoever. It would be about a $16,000 increase. A 1% gives us about $8,000 and a 2% we give about 16 plus, so I am not opposed to that. But because we increased it last year and because we're not the lowest and because we're not the highest, we're the middle average, and also to respect to the other 26 sending district that do also have budget situation also.
So it didn't relate to any particular expenses or budget? We just thought 1% was a nice figure?
Right. And, you know, we want to stay in the middle range. We don't want to be the highest. We don't want to be the... I do say that, you know, other matinee school do increase on a yearly basis, but we are not the lowest of the matinee school whatsoever.
Yes. Last year, the discussion was that expenses keep going up and our tuition had remained the same to the sending districts even though it costs the district, our district, our home district, more to educate them. So essentially, the Wyndham taxpayers were subsidizing the other 26 sending town students that they bring in per. And it had gone up significantly. We had never, over the life of Barrows, increased our tuition. So that's where the initial conversation came from last year before you were part of our Board again. So that's kind of the impetus for this whole conversation. Those of us who have been on the Board understood that and we should have let you know ahead of time where that conversation came from.
I just assumed that any... I assumed that any decision on price was... Would be driven in some part... in some part largely by expenses, as Murphy said. If my teacher's salary went up three percent, then I would have said, let's go up three percent. I'm just, obviously, we need to keep track of it, but there should be some logical progressive expenses of this, income's gotta be that in order to...
So the, so the other part is that we never get the matinee school grant at the beginning of the school year. You never know what you're going to get in matinee school, that would come later part in the year. So you never get it in September, October, November, you get it very late. Usually it come either, last year, a one percent decrease, so we're thinking if they maintain it to the one percent decrease, last year it came for about nine thousand dollars less. But you never know what they're going to give you, but usually it's a one percent decrease. Yeah.
So that was part of where it came up with the one percent?
Part of the discussion, right, yeah, the one percent. But I don't have any objection to putting it to two percent.
Any other discussion? Yes?
I would just like to say, as, as a district who's trying to get a budget passed, and we hear this, you know, now that we need to increase this, we should probably have this conversation earlier in the year, during the budget process, January, maybe in the fall with, you know, the principal, Mr. McLaren, at the, at Barrows and stuff like that, to be aware, so that way we can let districts know, sending districts know ahead of time too, that, you know, your, your tuition's gonna go up next year, one percent, two percent, ten percent, there's been some huge decrease in state funding or something like that, have this conversation ahead of time, so when other towns are crafting their budgets, we're not catching them unaware. If a, if a district sends one or two students, an extra hundred dollars, two hundred dollars isn't a huge deal, but some really small districts, if they send twenty students here, that, you know, that could be a decent impact on their budget.
So let me clarify, it's not totally, and where they know, we have until the fifteenth, so when we have the conversation, when I go to the meetings with them, they will say, okay, when will be notified, Patricia, when do you think this will take place? So by law, we have until the fifteenth to notify them, and so in conversation with them, I said, you know, we're looking at this, et cetera, et cetera, you will know by the fifteenth, because that's by law, that's the last deadline that we have to notify them.
I just thought it would be a courtesy to let them know.
Yeah, so we have this question, yeah.
It's a good point. Is there any, Ilda?
I think it might even be better to let them know before the lottery. Would that make sense, that we're gonna increase tuition?
Not the parents that are paying.
Parents aren't paying.
Yeah, that's true.
They are.
The district, they're paying taxes.
I mean, they are paying taxes.
But it's still, it's the district that gets the bill.
I think the point is well taken, that the earlier we can do it, the better off it is for everybody concerned.
I think, if I recall Norwich Free Academy...
Went up four percent a year.
Basically, they said, we're going up for four percent a year until, until we tell you we're not.
Yeah.
So, so at some point, we ought to talk about whether we want to basically have a continuing policy on increases for, not tonight, but at some point.
But they haven't written their policy, they go up four percent a year, doesn't matter what.
But we could, but we could at some point announce that Barrows is going up, say, two or two and a half percent a year, until we say it's not, and then they, they will know, every year it's gone up two and a half percent.
Now, does that then give districts the option to opt out of sending students to Barrows? Can Danielson decide that, or Plainfield, or Canterbury decide they don't want to send students to us?
No, it's a choice, it's a choice, go, the parents have the choice. But they could market not to send students, okay?[809.23][809.23](laughter)
All right. So are there, is there any further discussion on the motion that's on the floor to increase the tuition rates for the Barrows STEM Academy by two percent? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous?
Yes. Thank you for explaining.
Yes. Thank you. And then the last action item we have on the agenda is recommended approval of proposal for Drummy, Roseanne, Anderson, Inc. for architectural services. And who's explaining this?
Yeah, so, so we did put an RFK out for architecture services for the school district, particularly looking at the master plan and looking at other research projects that we want, for example, looking at options to create K through eight, or to close, or to combine school, all the options on the table. So we had nine applicants, there was a screening of the nine applicants, and then five were selected for an interview, three came to interview, and then we did a reference check, and the three companies were selected for the finals. But the company that was selected for the proposal, for the recommendation, is Drummy, Roseanne, and Anderson, DRA, and the three companies' references, all of them came very aligned to standards, came aligned to what we wanted to hear, all reference check, and the three companies were excellent reference checks, so we went back and looked at the range of services and the price of the services, and DRA was the one that came the lowest of the three. One came up for seventy-six thousand dollars, and the other one for a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, and DRA came for fifty-six. As we look at performance of the company, three of them are standard, references are aligned, same reference was very difficult to make a decision, so based on the price of the services, then that was the last indicator that we, that took place. DRA has a lot of experience in doing the kind of work that we want them to do with school districts.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to...
Before I said Mrs. Lambert was part of the committee that interviewed the architects.
Just the final round?
Yeah, the final round.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so now we're open for discussion.
So the, the reference that we got in our packet doesn't really tell us much, it basically says, we'll do what you ask us to do, except that...
It's a good reference.
Except that, I know, it's a note that, okay, so there's the whole thing?
Yeah.
I just said, but I do note that they just did this for the city, or recently did it for the city of Bristol, very similar to what we're asking for. So it's not like they haven't done this before, and I would assume that that was one of the reasons why they were recommended, is that they've done something very similar.
In Connecticut and in other states in Massachusetts.
You, you talked to them, what do you think?
After Garcia was speaking, I was letting him finish.
Okay.
Oops, sorry. Go ahead, Tracy.
I just have some concerns about this. I did sit in on the interview process, and each of them had strengths. The other two booklets are here, Mr. Doyle had asked to see them, the others are here. Basically, this is considerably more than we were paying the last architecture firm, and Dr. Garcia said she wanted somebody to take a fresh look at it, and while I can understand that, the previous architect firm was significantly less, and this time we're looking at two less schools. We no longer need to look at ECC, and we no longer need to look at the high school, so we just need to look at the other six buildings. This was significantly more, although the less of the three that Dr. Garcia...
What's the price difference? What's the cost difference?
Fifty-eight to twenty-four.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. And, and so that's a significant increase in cost, on top of the fact that a lot of the work is already done, there'll be some updating of, you know, statuses of the buildings and stuff like that, they've gotten older since the last time. Dr. Garcia also talked about hiring a firm from Boston to look at K through eight schools, because the architect will just look at the building structures. Well, until we decide if we're going on K through eight schools, or if that's feasible, the architect doesn't have a lot that they're gonna be doing over the course of this, because they're just gonna be doing building statuses, and a lot of that's already documented in the previous tenure facility master plan. So I'm concerned with costs, I'm concerned with timeline, because when we had the retreat last year, in September, we wanted to have it done by now, we haven't even begun the process now, we haven't gotten any data or any discussion on K through eight schools, or other demographics, local schools, making different schools, specialty schools or not, or whatever else could be out there, so it's hard to tell an architect, we want you to go ahead and look at blank, when this board hasn't made that determination for its future of its schools.
Can I, can I clarify?
May I finish?
Yeah.
So where we're gonna get the money for the Boston firm, especially in a very tight budget right now, where we're talking about cutting things, and where we're gonna get the extra money for this firm, are two of my major concerns right now. I don't think the DRA is a bad firm to do this in the least. They were very professional, very put together, of the three, I would say they were probably one of the better one. One, one was much more, for lack of a better term, granola-y, they were looking at things in a very interesting way, but not in a way I'm sure it's gonna fit our community, and I have no problem with DRA. I'm just very concerned about funding, and I'm looking forward in my committee to working with someone to move this forward, and, you know, Dr. Galucci, and Mike, when he can make it and stuff like that, Mr. DeZonius, we're very much forward looking to getting this launched, but I have real concerns about what happens if the budget fails and we cut some more, and then we can't afford the firm from Boston, basically, we're just gonna be getting the same thing we already have, because we don't have any new initiative to tell them to try and configure the buildings too.
So let me clarify, okay.
Mary had her hand up next, but is that okay if Dr. Garcia?
Oh, yeah, she can go.
So let me clarify, so don't even mention Boston here, because that's not, I don't want people to think that we even think about that. They're two part of this program, one is programmatic and one is building, and so that's a different thing. What this company is going to do, that they have a company that we had in the past have not done, is totally different, it's not only status of building, what we're going to look at, the different options to present to the board. We want to look, do we want to go through a K through eight, can we close a school, should we combine school? So this is a study, this is not something that's done in one month, this is a large study to look at all the options to present to the table. If you ask the school district like Bristol, that those went through the process, it took them months, close to a year, and this is a process involved community, that involved lots of study. So what we had before, with the previous company, they did not do that, they created a master plan, the same building, when to extend one building, when to look at another building. What we asking, what we want to get done this time, and the focus of our work is looking at different options to present to the board, and what would be the best way to use, utilize the building in Wyndham Public School for the next future. And then looking, we will be telling the architect what we would like to see, what are the options we'd like to see programmatically, that we want to see another high school in the district, that we want to see another K eight school, that we want to see, et cetera. They want to ask those questions, but this is looking at what, how you can utilize your building. In referring to costs, the other form was that we had, was twenty-four thousand dollars a year, and so in this budget, we did add thirty thousand dollars, because we know that this study will cost more as we look at other school district in the state, so we did put that thirty thousand. We have had lots of conversation with Bristol, since they have gone through this process, looking at their school, and like I said, it's not just looking at the plan, I, my thought was that the board wants to receive different options of what can be done in the school district, so that's why we put out the RFK. So if you take a look, what we asked them to do is not what the other architect has done in the past.
Well, you know, I do find it somewhat of a distraction to talk about reconfiguring schools and say, do we need this building, or another high school is a new one to me. So I don't think there's any ideal composition of grades, I think we have certain buildings, and, you know, twenty years ago, we were building that middle school, which is, I think, still a very nice building, very serviceable for four grades, but I just don't see the logic, and I think it's a distraction, we have a lot of pressing needs in this district with climate, we, we have a hard time retaining administrators, teachers, and other things, so, and I, this to me smacks of magic bullet, you know, oh, if we have K eight, it's going to solve our middle school problem, which I don't think it will, so...
I just, I think that asking an architect, and this is the same thing that we just went through in the high school renovation project, the architect is not the person to tell us what configuration of schools, or buildings, or, or school programs that we should have. That's very different from what an architect does. They can come to us with lots of different programs, but until this board decides what its, its position is and what its future is of its buildings, as in programmatically, having an architect to me is a secondary thought. We had the architect and the builder helping with the ed specs, and both of them said it's, and Mary can back me up, because they said this at a building committee, that it's not our job to set the programmatic and stuff like that together, it's our job to design it too.
To meet those.
Right. So, thank you.
Is there anybody else who wants to say anything? Murphy?
Okay, so listening to that, I am concerned about whether or not we've got the horse in the cart backwards, as it were. As I see it, the argument for K to eight is, we have three hundred and sixty students in the district in a K to eight school, we'll have another three hundred or so in another K to eight school if we go to the K to eight school for dual language. That's gonna be, of the students that we have between K and eight, it's gonna be, what, more than forty percent of them in K to eight schools anyway? So the question is, do we, does it make sense to have two different kinds of grade configurations in the district? And I don't know the answer to your question about whether, I'm not convinced that, that there isn't a difference between K to eight and, and, but, you know...
Without more information?
Without, without more informa, I mean, there's some arguments that some of the difficulties that we've had in the middle school is packing all of our middle school students into that one building, as opposed to spreading them out over three buildings. Whether or not that would have a difference in, for example, we have this problem with the students move from elementary to middle school, there is a dip in their, in their I haven't actually seen an analysis of whether or not holding the elementary school students until fifth grade and moving to, in sixth, as opposed to moving in fifth, made a difference or not. I haven't actually seen that analyzed, Mary, you may be right. We maybe should have said, well, let's put, let's make the middle school five to eight, but we know that when we had five to eight, that we had this struggle with students entering the fifth grade in that building. I don't know that we don't have a struggle with sixth graders entering that building now, because I haven't seen data on, on, on what happens, and we've been doing it long enough that there should be data. And would that go away if we had K to eight schools? Would you have a smoother student performance from, you know, through the eighth, I don't, I don't know without a study. But it doesn't seem to make sense to me that we have a large number of our children in K to eight, and another large number of our children in something other than K to eight, so I'd kinda like...
How does that relate to the question that's on the table?
Well, I'd kinda like to get the analysis of what the programmatic structure ought to be. I think that if we wanted to convert the buildings to K to eight, that that's possible. And, and, and I think that this would be a lot less expensive if that was the question you were asking the architect, rather than, take a look at this, take a look at that, take a look at the other thing, which is what they did before in Bristol.
So just, just so I'm clear on what you're saying, you're, are you making the suggestion that, when you said at the very beginning of your comments, you, we may be putting the cart before the horse?
That maybe we should, maybe we should be holding off on doing this until we've done...
Doing more work on our programmatic desires before we start talking about...
I guess my question is, would this be a whole lot less expensive if we had a programmatic decision and told them what we wanted?
Mary?
I just wanted to add also regarding a K eight compañeros school, of, you know, I am certainly a proponent of second language acquisition and bilingual and all of that. However, there's a consistent drop of twenty percent or more of students from kindergarten to fifth grade that we see every single week when we get the classroom counts, is only, it is the most pronounced for the compañeros, and those students are moving over back into the non-compañeros programs. We saw that same movement, that same attrition, when we did have K eight compañeros in this district for a few years. By the time they get in the upper levels, students drop that, they, they stop attending for whatever reason, and we should do a study of it, of our own district, but it's a pronounced drop in student enrollments in those classes, and I would be loath to create a school where it's, it's, we're not gonna have students who continue throughout, and who can't go into this school in the midst, you know, in fourth or fifth grade, because they needed to have the dual language ahead of time. So that's another kind of idea that's discussed in this district, and I'm not sure it's feasible.
Amy is looking at the data.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I saw Ms. Vindsmith disagreeing with some of what you've just put out there as fact, but I'd, let's just like to say, we are wandering into a conversation about academic and programmatic design for the school district, and what we have on the, on the table right now is a proposal for some architectural services that would do more than just look at the buildings, but could also look at programmatic needs. But what I'm hearing from some people on the board is that they feel that we may be better served, so I'm just putting it on the table, better served to have those discussions internally before we, with informed discussions, not just opinions of various people around the table here, but informed discussions about this before moving forward. discussions about this before moving forward. I'd like to hear what you have to say about that, Dr. Garcia.
Well, I just want to add that something I remiss to add. The RFQ is not only for the study of the options of the building, it's also for the architect, for the district and retainer, because we really don't have one right now. So like you guys, we still have Friar and Associate before. We don't have an architect in the district. So it was much, much cheaper to have someone to do both function, be the architect from the district and conduct the study than to go hide and have somebody to do the study. The purpose of the study is to look at the option of your building. I mean, programmatic studies, we can continue having that discussion, we can start. But I think, based on the retreat that we have last year, you, the board, they wanted to look at the option of the building. So you start by looking at your building and looking at your options and looking at your enrollment. That's necessary. Both of them can take place at the same time, they can be aligned at the same time. You don't need to do one before the other. But, but looking at the building, you cannot shy away from that. There will have to be a study that look at the option of your building, look at your enrollment, look at your prediction for enrollment, look at your grade projection, et cetera, et cetera. So one, sooner or later, at one point, you're going to have to do that to start making a decision of what you're going to do with these buildings. So I just want to say that proposal is not only to conduct that study, but it was much cheaper to have the person that will be the architect for the district also conduct the study instead of those hire somebody to do the study.
Ilda?
I have a question. I'm a little confused. So now, who is working on the high school renovation project? Isn't that Friar?
Separate from this.
Friar, this is separate.
So is this a good time for us to be hiring another company?
Well, Friar was both. Friar was the architect for the school district and the architect for the school.
No, but this company here, this DRA, is this a good time to be hiring them?
The Board of Ed doesn't pay for, pay for the architect for the building.
Okay, well, who pays for it?
That's split 80% between the state and the town. That's what we went to the referendum for.
That's entirely different project. For the high school project.
This is for the high school project.
No, 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 this is not related to that at all.
That's what I'm asking. Who's paying for this, for DRA?
We are.
Board of Ed?
The district have always had an architect.
No.
Yeah, to look at all the building.
The district has not always had an architect. I'm sorry.
Oh, well, during my time, during my time.
The district has not always had an architect.
Okay, we have more than one person speaking at once. Mark and then Murphy.
Just speaking directly to the question, I can't vote for $58,000 expense, given the, what I heard today at our budget meeting, which was total confusion, and what I see coming up with the Board of Finance, the possible cuts. This is the worst muscle time for the board to agree to a $58,000 new expense.
That's what I'm saying.
I just, I can't vote for that. And the, going into left field with Murphy about the compañeros K through 8 program, that's not even on, in the picture right now, and that's probably six years away before we even think about opening those doors. So I don't think that has any real merit to this discussion.
We've been talking about...
You've been talking about it, but it's six years away before, even if we got a yes.
Okay, we're not, we're not talking about that right now.
Okay, so...
Murphy, do you have something unrelated to the...
So I'm inclined to, I'm, well, I'm inclined to support this in part because I can't, I can never remember whether Sweeney was, Sweeney and Wyndham Center have not been renovated since '64 and '68. I just never can remember which one is which. But they're both more than 50 years since they've been renovated. The North Wyndham School was last renovated in 1986. That's, that's 33 years, right? And we are not going to break ground on a renovation, as Mark just pointed out, until after the high school renovation is finished. So we're like five or six years away. And in order to even get there to do a renovation, we need to do this. And so we're going to be operating in elementary schools that haven't been renovated in more than 60 years, almost no matter what we do. And we've been, you know, we should have been doing this two or three years ago. This is, it, I mean, the, we get into the situation where we have buildings that are not only obsolete, they're beyond obsolete. And then we want to delay because, well, it's expensive or because we haven't decided something. We've got to move. And right now, this looks like the best opportunity to have to, we did a, we did a master plan six, seven years ago?
2012.
2012, according to that.
That's, yeah, that's seven, that's seven years ago. Okay. And, and that master plan was going to renovate the elementary schools before we did the high school. But for what seemed like good and sound reasons, we decided to do the high school first, which means we now have to go back and rethink what we're doing with the elementary school. By the way, once we get around to renovating the buildings that haven't been renovated in 30 to 50 some years, the middle school is coming up on 20 years old. We're not going to touch that until we've done the elementary. It'll be more than 30 years old before, you know, if we don't move, we're going to be facing, you know, this children going to ancient buildings for as far as the eye can see. We've really got to do something. Now, this may not be the right meeting to approve this, Mark. We might want to wait until we've gone through the budget process, but we need to get this done.
Well, I am sensing that there's a lot of hesitation about approving this this evening. I've heard, but we could put it to a vote and see where we get, what people think. Do you want to close discussion and vote on the motion that's on the floor?
One more thing?
Yes?
Dr. Sewell, what you just said has credence. We haven't touched a lot of our buildings, and we are overdue on that. However, if we do this report now and don't plan on doing any action for six years, we're going to be exactly where we are right now with the last facilities master plan. Only, we will be $58,000 poorer. Because I don't think that this town approves anything else until they see how this high school project comes out and they find out that they can trust us, the building committee and the Board of Ed, with renovating our buildings and making them educationally appropriate. So I, I am ready for the vote if you are. But that just, I just wanted you to see that six years since we last did it, and we've gotten one building done. If we do it again now, and I know it needs to be done, and I know we need to do it, but we don't have a plan. We, we can't design buildings without some kind of direction from the Board of Ed. And from what I've heard tonight, we don't have a direction amongst us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to make any last comments?
I make a motion that we table this until after the budget.
Defer is the right word.
Defer this until after the budget. Because we can't ask for any more money. I mean, we can't ask our community for any more money. It's going to be hard to sell what we're asking for now.
So you're making a motion to defer action on this, this item until after the budget is passed?
Passed. Yes.
There's already a motion on the floor.
Right.
Yeah, but, but you can amend the motion by moving to defer.
I'm amending the motion.
She's actually moving to defer. So somebody would have to second that.
Somebody who, yeah, somebody needs to accept that amendment. Who made the motions on the original one?
Murphy did.
No.
Murphy did.
No.
Seconded it.
For the sake of discussion.
Nope.
That was the last one.
That was before.
Would you, would you, would you accept the amendment?
I think you're right. I think, I think we're not prepared to vote on this tonight.
Okay, you'll accept the amendment.
I would accept the, I think, the idea of deferring.
The amended motion. Okay.
Bill had made the motion and, excuse me, Ms. Ray made the motion and Dr. Sewell seconded.
Yeah, accepted that, yes.
She's amending her own then.
Okay.
Accept the amendment.
Thank you, Katie.
Yes, I accept the amendment.
Is there any discussion on the amendment that's on the floor to defer action? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment that's on the floor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstentions.
So there are one, two, three, there are, motion carries. We're deferring action. Thank you. And I think that's the last item on the agenda, unless there's any public comment.
So we're not going to...
No, we don't have an executive session. Is there any public comment? Okay, hearing none?
I don't, I don't know if it's, it's not a public comment. It's a question for future, for a future agenda item. I still want to hear the official response to the letter we received regarding the movement of, the staff movement that we made from, was it, our buildings were presented?
Okay, I'll forward the letter to you. I'll forward the response to you.
Official response, yeah.
Thank you.
Now, is this made in a moment?
Do we have executive session this evening?
No, we do not. That's what I just said. We have no executive session, no need to have an exec, it's just sort of a standing thing on the agenda. We don't have one. So entertain a motion to...
I mean, we adjourn?
Adjourn.
Yes, second.
Okay, meeting adjourned at 9:25.